Regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the role?
Mr. Falcoff?
Here.
Ms. Nork?
Here.
Mr. Sermon?
Here.
Ms. Urban?
Here.
Chairman Schneider?
Here. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. This evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with state law.
Thank you so, so much.
We've got Mr. Pelleton, welcome.
Hello, hello. I'm very sorry that I'm late. I was having technical difficulties.
No problem. I'm just proceeding with my introduction. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on a local cable access Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the Internet on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the Village's website at www.willmet.com. Find the calendar then for the zoning board meeting that you would like to join. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will be also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube and call in to the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 949-482-143. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of Village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting, our meeting guests joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those who are new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence, applications for variances for our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application variation based on whether the application meets the standards or reviews set forth in Section 5.4. F of our Village Ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards or reviews set forth in Section 5.3. E of our Village Ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we are making this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on April 27th, April 27. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has final say on all applications. We'll make and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it, rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tierney of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this Village Board, an applicant, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, we have seven members, and it looks like we have a full complement. Mr. Kattard, thank you for managing to get on. I think we're all here, right? Two, four, six, seven. So we're all set. We have, so I don't have to read all this. In any case, I think we have a full complement of members. But nevertheless, I guess applicants can ask for continuance, but I don't think that's necessary. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please take your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards or review that are applicable to it. Each member of the board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from Village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessary that you repeat, but you are already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the application, after the applicant had the chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say. We would ask that they keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through YouTube Chat, Team Chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
I do.
I assume all the others that I can see have done so as well. Ms. Roberts, can we start with the first case?
Our first case is 2021 Z91502 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request for a two-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to create the replacement of a six-foot tall solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street. And our applicant is here.
Welcome.
Hello. First, my name is Cynthia Parr. I'm the applicant. I live at 1502 Elmwood here in Willmet. I first like to thank the board for making the time or allowing us to come here and talk about the exemption. So in looking at the standards of review in the package I put together, I also did some research on the recent fence variations that have come before the board. And I think in seeing that most of them, if not all of them, recently have been denied. But I, in looking at, I'm so sorry, the train is going by my house, so it's a little noisy.
All right, no problem.
But I think in looking at my fence situation, I do think that I have some components that are similar to some of the other fence variation requests. And yet, I think I do have a unique combination of variation considerations that I think hopefully will make the board consider mine more strongly. So for me, if you've all been to my house in the last week, I live directly across the street from the lovely Jiffy Lube that's on Green Bay Road. I also basically live at the intersection of 15th and Green Bay. And so I think the main difference with me is that I currently have a six-foot fence up. When I purchased the property two years ago, it was there. It's a full six-foot, 100% fence that has been there for probably 30, 40 years. I've worked really hard on my house to update it. I've replaced the roof and the siding. I've tried to make it aesthetically pleasing as possible to the neighborhood. And a lot of my neighbors have said something to me about that they're really happy that I didn't tear the house down, but instead have tried to rehab it and tried to make it look better. The one thing I will say is that I know this has nothing to do with the standards of review, but I am a single mom. I have two very young children. I have a six-year-old and a 10-year-old. And if I, and this is on me for not understanding the zoning rules, but if I known that I would have to replace that fence with something that was short and 50% see-through, I really don't know if I would have bought the house, to be honest with you, just because of the exposure to Green Bay and Jiffy Lube. And Jiffy Lube, just to briefly talk about the commercial nature of that property, like there's just people in and out of there all the time. People park on my street and walk in there. People, employees, families come and they park on my street. There's just a steady stream of people coming in and out of Jiffy Lube right there. Additionally, at 15th Street, people use my intersection to go around the Lake Avenue and Green Bay Road light there. And people turn onto 15th going so incredibly fast. And so it really is just a huge stressful, like from a privacy perspective as well as a safety perspective. So I know that the board has looked at all of my comments and everything I've written up, so I don't want to waste your time babbling on and on about why I feel like I should be granted this variance. But I think that for me, I think the key is the Jiffy Lube, having a commercial property as well as the busy street, and then also replacing an existing six-foot fence. And with that, I'll open it up for questions or turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Parr. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. I noticed that your neighbor already has a fence. It looks like it's five foot high or so. It looks like you're proposing to take down a small picket fence and put a six-foot fence there.
No, I'm sorry if there's confusion there. No, I want to, I have a six-foot fence in my backyard, is basically my side yard. So I'm just trying to replace that with something similar. So I'm not trying to take a picket fence and bring it up. I'm trying just to replace what's there, if that's clear.
So in front of the neighbor's fence that exists, which is about five foot, you're going to add a six-foot fence, is that correct?
I was just going to match my, I think my neighbor is like five and a half. They have a, an arched fence that has like the shadow box. I was just going to match them. I would talk to a fence person, said I just want to match them. So I think that if there is this five feet, that that's basically what I would match. I wanted to aesthetically match what my neighbor already had.
I'm going to jump in here. This is Riley Pelleton. I think part of it is, I was very confused by the titles on the pictures in the packet, which there on page 1.5, there are three titles, but only two pictures, for example. And Didier, she's replacing the stocking fence that is visible in 1.5, the six-foot stockade fence. And I believe you're, that one, right, exactly. And I believe that what you're looking for is this board-on-board with the next one, Lisa?
Yeah.
That one, right? Is that right?
Yes, yes. I apologize for the confusion.
Well, I know, I was confused at first, but when I was out there, it was obvious, you know, 1502 is, is the house, you know, the address on the house. And it's sort of a side yard more than anything else.
Yes, yes, for sure.
I have a question. I did come by your property. I didn't get out and like peek into your yard or anything, but I was curious if, as cars that are traveling south or that are just going to turn off of Green Bay onto 15th Street, I'm just imagining that possibly you have headlights that would be sort of shining into your side yard. And I don't know, you know, what else you have happening there, but maybe you could comment on that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. Yes, if you turn down, if you, if you turn off Green Bay and go south on 15th, and if I didn't have that fence there, on the back of my house is basically like where my family room is with my TV, and I have windows there. So there certainly would be headlights that would shine directly in and then ultimately into my little kitchen. And so you're absolutely right that without that tall fence, those headlights would be coming directly into my home.
Thank you.
Yes, no, thank you, thank you.
I wanted to ask a question. Your neighbor to the north, I believe it is, has an open, very low, white picket fence? Is that correct?
Yes.
And I, you know, help me to understand why we have this, this ordinance, because that looks very inviting. And then you get to your house and it is a very private look. It's a very closed look, and I fully appreciate you trying to now keep that. Are we likely, I mean, it is possible. And I'll raise this just as an issue for other members of the board, that people going all along there, for example, your neighbor to the north, would now want to have a six-foot-high privacy fence. Is there a reason why you think that they wouldn't be the next one to come in and say, oh, well, how about me too? And that, you know, continues this process, basically saying, Green Bay is a busy place. We ought not to, we ought to keep it very private, so, and keep up big fences to block off Green Bay?
Certainly. I think that that's an excellent point. I would say one of the major differences between myself and the house to the north of me is that because of where my house is sitting on my lot, my backyard is my side yard. And for them, they actually have a true backyard that goes into the alley. So they do have an area of their yard where they can have some privacy. And I'm not in any way wanting to put up a full six-foot fence in front of the front of my home and like have a real, like, you know, a completely private area like that. I'm really wanting it for just that side yard so that I can have privacy in my backyard or have like a hint of privacy in my backyard there. And I will say, I have spoken with my neighbors. I emailed everybody. I went door-to-door and talked to everybody, and they were all in favor of me replacing it. So I want to say, I did try to, you know, I walked around and tried to personally talk to everybody. I emailed them, and then of course, I sent out the notices that the board required me to as well.
Okay.
Of course.
This is, this, uh, Sermon. I just wanted to respond a little to your comment, Brad. I think the difference here is that the owner bought the home with the intention of having a fence in that area. You know, it was done by the previous owner. And so that's different than a new applicant coming saying, hey, I want to put up a brand-new fence, if that makes sense. It's, this has always been, you know, I've been on the board a long time. This has always been an issue with putting up these fences. There was, I remember a series of cases where people along Ridge Avenue north of Mallinckrodt wanted to put up these fences because they said, well, Ridge is a really busy street. It's noisy. And some of them actually said that they would put it behind some evergreens, I think. But the board denied it because we didn't want Ridge to turn into an area of, you know, tall fences.
That helps, Bob, because I was thinking of the case we had not that long ago near Canterbury on Sheridan Road, where that owner was saying, gee, I'll have an open fence and I'll put up some kind of greenery. And ultimately, and I can't remember who did what, but ultimately, the answer was no. And so I was thinking about that, wondering how different Ms. Parr's case was from that one.
We have, in the past, approved, I believe the case was off of Illinois Road right before it bends to go directly west. There's a home there, and they had headlights coming from the west that headed directly into the house that's in, in kind of the V of that intersection. So at that point, that was a disturbance to have those bright headlights, and we did approve that one.
I have a question for the applicant. Can you put up 1.2, please? Ms. Parr?
Yes, sir.
Can you take me down to the, between Elmwood and Forest on, front in Green Bay?
Yes.
Those lots, one is between Elmwood and the alley and one between the alley and Forest.
Yeah.
I believe only one of those has a high fence. Can you identify which one it is? Forgot.
So there's one on, between Elmwood and the alley, that that one does have the high fence. So kind of up on, like at Elmwood and Green Bay on the north side there. Yeah, there. They do have a high fence, and that's the one that I put the picture of in my, in my application.
And that's the only one, because the one between Green Bay, between the alley and Forest on Green Bay thus has a regular, I mean, has a lower fence, correct?
Yes, yes.
And there are no other examples along that street as far as I can determine? And across from you, there is a, at the, aren't there a high Arborvitae that shield you to some extent from the Jiffy Lube?
There are. There historically have been. You're absolutely right. I would say about two-thirds of them right now are brown and dead. And so I don't know what their long-term plan is to replace those. But the ones particularly like right across from my, from my backyard, my side yard, that's my backyard, almost all of those are brown and dead. So I don't know what they're ultimately going to do, but they really, they're starting to lose their, it's not leaves, but their needles or whatever you want to call them. And so I think that that, that barrier that has been there historically is really not going to be there much longer.
Okay. Again, as I, the lot that is, the triangular lot north of Elmwood Avenue, which is the Jiffy Lube lot, the part that is directly across from you to the east is really more of a kind of a, you can't even, they can't even park in there really, so the building is really to the south. Anyway, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, you have, your last caption on the picture of the, your neighbor's house that has the high fence, it says, "With trees or bushes to hide, the fence you'd like to install." Can you tell us about the trees or bushes that you intend to plant?
Sure. No, I've, I've spoken with my, the man who does my landscaping, and I've talked to him about, I know that the board would prefer if I was allowed the variance to have some sort of bushes or something to make it not stick out as much. And so I have talked to him, and he is, he said that we can absolutely do something, and he's pulled some different varieties for me to look at. And he said that if we do move forward, that he would definitely, I definitely want to put something there to make it look nicer.
One of the reasons I ask is that, just like Mr. Falcoff, I was thinking about 33 Canterbury Court, where not only do they have an open fence, they weren't permitted a tall, open fence. And the thought was that the Arborvitae would provide the screening that is, you know, the fence provides the security so that people aren't wandering in and out or dogs or animals or whatever. But the Arborvitae or the landscaping provides the privacy. And so I was wondering how this case different, you know, differentiated itself from that one. I am sympathetic to it. I think that you've got a, you know, quite an exposed yard. And I live on Lake Avenue, so right near the downtown. And I understand why, you know, being exposed to a busy area, you'd like to have something that is secure and private. But I do struggle with the difference between this and 33 Canterbury Court.
I guess my, my only question is, I completely understand with you if my only issue was the busy street, and I totally get you there. But I think the busy street combined with the commercial property of the Jiffy Lube, combined with the fact that I'm replacing something that was already there, I feel like the combination of those three factors does differentiate me from some of the other cases that have come before the board.
I would just jump in and say that Canterbury Court also had a tall fence that he just wanted to replace. And traffic volumes on Sheridan Road are heavy. I will say that in this case, the house feels more proximate to Green Bay than the house on Canterbury, which was down a long slope and removed from Sheridan Road. And I do think that the fact that you're abutting a commercial property that is quite active over the course of the day makes, makes a case for a hardship in this situation that did not exist in the other instances we've been talking about.
And the difference, I guess the difference about this, I'm sorry, Christine, the difference is that the parking lot is actually exposed with a lot of people going in and out compared to if you were, say, behind the Walgreens. You know, there's an alley, and then there's, you know, there's a level of separation, and people are parking right up next to or, you know, within a close distance of the, of the yard.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question, but I have a comment. We discussed Forest at Green Bay. I think that, and when I drive up Green Bay Road and I'm coming home, the easy way to turn is 15. Short term. To go down Forest, it's very hard.
It's hard to hear you, Didier.
Yes.
Are you okay?
It's not muted.
Maybe if you're closer to the, to the microphone, it would help.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, what I was saying is, I think this corner, as opposed to, say, Forest Street, is quite different because it's a very soft corner. So if somebody is wanting to avoid, avoid the corner of Lake Street, it's a very easy way to do it because it's a soft corner. If you went down to Forest Street, it's a very hard corner. 120-degree corner. So, which means this side has a lot more.
Okay.
I lost you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, we'll close the testimony and ask for a vote. So we can then discuss, not ask for a vote, but have our own discussion if there are no other questions for the applicant. Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Parr. I will now ask for a, for a motion.
But did Lisa indicate?
Do we have anybody else? Yeah.
Yeah, there's no one else in the meeting and no email or YouTube chat comments have come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
This is Bob Sermon. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a two-foot fence height variation and fence open variation to permit the replacement of a six-foot-tall solid fence in the side yard adjoining the street at 1502 Elmwood in accordance with the plans submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay. I've been on the board a long time. Every case, we look at individually. You know, we don't look at past precedents and, and past results. I think this is a, is a unique situation. I think the owner bought it with the intention of having that privacy adjacent to the Jiffy Lube. I think that's a strong case for supporting this. If I was to buy a home and saw the fence there, I would have assumed that it was in accordance with all the zoning regulations. I wouldn't think that now I've got to tear it down and put up a much shorter, open fence. And I think- I think, you know, the, the, the turning of the headlights too, you know, that's a unique angle that you come in off of Green Bay on the fifteenth, and I can see the lights going right into the fence. So I think, uh, those two issues are, uh, uh, different than a lot of other fence cases that we've had. And, or, and the third issue is the adjacency to the Jiffy Lube, which, you know, I know that there's got to be a certain level of noise from their air hammers or whatever devices they're using. Um, and it, and they're open on Saturday at some point too. So it really interferes with enjoyment of the property, I think. And that's how that's different than putting a fence along Ridge or Sheridan. So that's all I have to say.
And I would agree with what Bob has said. Uh, I'm, I'm not persuaded by owners' expectations as a basis, but I am persuaded by the fact that this property does above commercial property. And that in my mind makes it a rather unique piece of property. And all the problems that come with having commercial property, which is open with an open lot right outside, uh, the owner's, uh, side door, back door, whatever that is. Uh, it really does diminish the use and the enjoyment of the property. And so I would support the application.
I, I agree with everything that, um, Bob and Brad have just said. And I believe that a house with the lower fence in this location uh, would not be attractive to a vast majority of possible buyers. Um, and this is, um, truly a hardship and, and, uh, this is a practical solution. So I can support it.
This is Chris. Yeah, this is Chris. I too can support the, um, proposal. I think that, that, uh, the six-foot high um, solid fence is appropriate for this location.
Okay, uh, my comments are the follows. I, I, I think we, we have been fairly given strong consideration to avoiding six-foot high fences in the village. And I think it has been a good policy, a good zoning ordinance. There are exceptions where things, uh, circumstances are such that we have to make an exception. Is this that exception? If this had fronted, fronted Green Bay Road directly as two lots to the south do, and one of them has a high fence, uh, presumably built some time ago, the other one doesn't. Um, the, the lot to the south on the southwest corner of Elmwood and fifteenth, which is also opposite and maybe even more impactful to the Jiffy Lube because that's where the main drive and building is. As I, as far as I can tell, does not have a, uh, six-foot fence. So I, I, I am troubled. I, I, uh, I have a difficult time making an exception here. And so I will, uh, I will not be able to support it. And if there are any other comments, uh, let's take a vote.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
You're muted, Maria.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
No. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the, to the zoning board, uh, and, I mean, to the full board. And, uh, they will meet on April twenty-seventh to consider the case. You may want to be there. Thank you very much.
Uh, I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty twenty-one dash C dash zero nine.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. And Ms. Roberts, could we call the next case?
Our next case is twenty twenty-one Z eight twenty Harbor Drive. This is a request for a zero point five foot combined side yard deck setback variation, a twenty-nine foot rear yard deck setback variation, a one thousand five hundred and twenty-four point zero four square foot rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation, and a one thousand three hundred and ninety-two point eight seven square foot rear yard total impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a deck on a legal non-conforming structure. And, um, Mike and Hyde are our applicants and they are both here.
Could you please state your name and address, please?
Hi, excuse me. Um, my name is Mike Benachuk and I live at sixteen fifteen Highland Avenue here in Wilmette. I'm the architect for the Wilmette Harbor Association. Um, so we're asking for a couple zoning variances to allow them to expand their existing deck to meet their current outdoor dining needs. The club has around five hundred families now. Um, and I just found out today, you don't even have to own a boat to be a member. Um, they have about a hundred people waiting and they were able to admit five people this year. They just don't have the capacity for more than that. So that was kind of interesting. Um, so the existing deck has always been way too small for the needs of the club. Um, there's only room for about thirty tables. And it's always at capacity. Now, but that's it in good weather. Then came COVID and they dropped from around thirty tables down to about fifteen tables. Um, we're all hopeful that pretty soon we can get back to normal, but we don't know when that will be or, or what normal will look like.
Let me interrupt. Now you're referring to the upper deck. Is that correct?
Yes. No, no, no. The, um, this, this deck, right? The lower deck, that one right there. Yeah, the upper is, is separate. It's up on the upper, above, um, Hyde, are you available?
Yeah, it's on a different level.
Yeah, different level. So it's this lower, it's the lower deck.
Okay.
It's the proposed section on the left side of the picture.
Yes, there we go. So we would like to add a little more space to pick up a, a few more tables. Um, now the variations that we're requesting are to our maximum rear yard impervious surface coverage, to our rear yard structural impervious surface coverage, to our combined side yard setback, that was about six inches. Um, but also to the club's existing special use exemption, exception, excuse me. Um, they'll need that variation to the special use just because it's an expansion of the functional area of the club. So we're requesting these, we're requesting that you grant these zoning variances because we feel we meet the following six standards of variation. So one, the particular physical condition, shape or surrounding of the property would make it, would impose upon a, the owner a practical difficulty or particular hardship. Um, you know, it's the slope of the land that drops down to the lake, that the deck, as soon as the handrail of the deck is more than six foot six, you have to count all of the deck area as, um, structure, like a building. And it counts towards the structural impervious surface, excuse me. You can see on one seven. So most of the deck, excuse, most of the deck is counted as a building. Um, now the plate of the property owner wasn't created by the owner, but due to unique situations. Um, which is true. The location of the existing building and deck were located by previous owners. Um, the difficulty with the property here is much of the building and the deck were built in the rear yard. It's close to the lake. Everything is down there. Um, any practical expansion of the existing deck would necessitate it being located where we're proposing it to be in the rear yard of the property, unfortunately. Now, the difficulty or hardship is peculiar to the property in question and not generally shared by other properties in the same zoning district. Their property is unique. It's not shared by any other property in the village. Their hardship is the existing building and deck were located in the rear yard of the property years ago. You can see how much, you know, one point nine, you can see how much is already in there. Let's see, what's the next one? The, um, all the difficulty hardship resulting from my application chapter would prevent the owner from making reasonable use of the property. We feel these hardships, we would incur where we required to meet the current zoning requirement would prevent us from providing adequate seating for the club's current members and thus can't make a reasonable use of the property. We feel the request is very reasonable and our proposed deck will help provide adequate seating for our current club members. Now, though, the proposed variation certainly will not impair an adequate supply of light and veric, adjacent properties or otherwise injured properties or its use. Um, there, our proposed deck expansion will not impair any adequate supply and light event to the adjacent properties, won't increase the danger of fire, um, won't endanger the public health, safety, welfare. There really are no nearby homes or businesses other than the Coast Guard Station, which is located just about two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet away. Um, there just isn't much around this. The variation, if granted, won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will be consistent with the goals, objectives and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan. Our proposed improvements will actually add to the essential character of the neighborhood and is very much in keeping with the goals, objectives and policies. Um, the reworking and expansion of the existing deck won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, or rather just add to what's currently there. You know, we're just, we're just expanding what we have. Um, so we feel our requests are modest and reasonable and we hope you grant them. So thank you for your time and I'll gladly answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by the board members?
I have a question for Lisa, I believe. Um, when I visited the property, I noticed that the current deck is being rebuilt. And given that it is non-conforming, um, I was surprised that that reconstruction of an existing structure would not be, would not require a variance in itself. And, and so Lisa, I wonder if you could educate me?
Um, I am not familiar with what's going on there now, but, um, there is some, some work is considered maintenance. Um, so for example, on a residential deck, if you were, you know, replacing the, the floorboards, but not the structure underneath it, that needs a permit, but it doesn't, it's not a zoning issue. Um, same thing with, you know, railings, as long as they're conforming in height. If you're just replacing those, it doesn't need relief. Um, so, so it could be that the work that they're doing is maintenance.
Hey, I, I would equate this with those, um, applications we receive where it's an existing structure being rehabbed, but it's being rehabbed to such a degree that it's brand spanking new. That there is, eh, eh, there may be the cement foundations to the old deck may still be in place, but there is brand new floor, joists, uh, fence. I, I don't know what you call it, but the, the, the barrier to keep people on the deck. It, it's all completely brand new construction.
So I can speak to that. We had, uh, um, put a new roof on the, um, existing structure and we pulled all the deck apart. The, the stuff was all rotten underneath. So when we did that, we, um, so started, we were going to place the old decking and the roof. And once we started to do that, we realized that it was all just, um, rotten underneath. And it created a really unsafe environment.
It, it's still, um, I might, I'm, I would have assumed that a complete reconstruction like this would have been subject to a variance, given that it is in a non-conforming location and for all practical purposes is brand new construction, no different than the prior case is a brand new fence. Yes, there's a fence in place, but they're seeking to replace it. Um, and they needed a permit and a variance in order to do that. I, I was surprised when I was out there.
I think this is, I, you know, I have to disagree. I think this is different because they really are truly just replacing it. And if you use the analogy of a house that's being torn down and then rebuilt, you know, the whole plant, the floor plan could be different, the heights of the house, that's what happens in those cases. So in this case, I think it, and I rely on Lisa that it falls under true just maintenance and repair. And, uh, they, they came about and, you know, they went about it the proper way, it sounds like, with replacing the decking. And then that was a, a field condition that they were unaware of that happened to come up, that the joists are rotted. So, um, I think it's fair that they just continue to, to replace.
Yeah, we didn't change the physical structure or anything.
Uh, it's interesting that your interpretation of that, Bob, because that's not what I heard from Lisa at all, but, um, um, I do understand that what they're doing is attempting to replace exactly what was there. I, I don't know if there, there are plans, because we don't have the plans for that replacement to look at, whether it will be the exact same thing or some slight variation of. Um, and, um, I, I, it did not occur to me, Maria, but, um, that is, uh, um, an interesting thought.
Another question I would have is, how many member events does the club hold a year? Um, and, and what percentage of the membership attends? And, and these are not events that a member would host if they had a wedding reception or something for their family. Excuse me?
So we have, once a month, there's a member event, um, through the summer and then, um, the last weekend in July, there's kind of our big, um, midsummer party. But other than that, it's kind of a, um, it's run by the membership, not by us above it, um, generating, um, parties or whatever. You know, the, the membership, um, likes coming down there and not having, um, events in their way so that they can use the, um, facilities.
And I have a question related to the membership as well. Mr. Benachuk had indicated there are five hundred families, uh, that are members.
Yeah, that's right. Between the, the mooring holders, the boat partners and social membership, that's about where we are at, just a little under that.
And that there's a, a fairly substantial waitlist, it sounds like. So, um, would this then enable an increase in membership or would you be holding it a, a, as is?
As is. We don't, we will not expand the membership. We're, you know, we're a little tiny, um, facility that, um, expanding the membership is, we're at our capacity now. And adding this deck space is really just getting us back to where we were prior to COVID.
I, I, I have a question, several questions.
Yes, sir.
The existing deck, which is torn up, uh, or has been removed basically and is beginning to be reconstructed. Underneath that, is there a building underneath? Is that a roof of something underneath?
Yes, the, 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 the existing structure was built over like two different, three different sections. And yes, there's a, there's a poured in place concrete, like, it looks like a dugout. That has, that has, that has a flat roof on top that was leaking.
So, so in an effort to fix that leak to the structure below, the space below, you had to tear up the deck. And then as in the process of tearing up the deck, you found out that the joists were corroded.
Correct.
You had to replace all of that. Now, I, again, I am, I don't know whether technically, and maybe you should, at least I can, can verify whether that constitutes a rebuilding and therefore constitutes requirements for a, for a variation. Uh, uh, and we can And we can ask Lisa to find, but the other question I had for the new deck.
Yes, sir.
There's a very nice evergreen, right, which looks like it's in the path of the new deck. Is that going to be preserved?
The evergreen will not. The, there were two trees that had to come down. One of them, the beaver took care of. The, we have a beaver problem that have eaten all the trees, so the beaver took care of one of them. And then we have one tree that we're going to have to take down to do this. But the flip side is, in the last three years, we've probably planted over 60 trees.
I'm talking about that evergreen up the slope. It's about a 12, 18-inch diameter.
Yes, correct. That will have to come down.
Because you can't build around it?
Yes.
And, and the deck will be impervious, what will be the space, what will be the, the spacing between the, the deck planks?
Well, whatever nail width is. Yeah, so, and there'll be nothing underneath it. It'll just go down to landscaper cloth.
So water will be able to drain down between. It's usually a quarter to a half inch between. So, flat deck, water can just drain down.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the?
Just, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question about the, the new deck. Right now, if you were to walk along the, the waterfront there, there is a concrete, it looks like a concrete walk that you can walk along the, the wall there?
By the boats?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
With the new deck, will you still be able to walk or will the deck in any way impede your ability to walk along that wall?
No, absolutely not. It will have no bearing on that. That, that dimension won't change at all.
Okay. And so basically, the new deck is where the slope of the land is and what you're doing is sinking caissons or something to hold up the deck?
Correct.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
I have a question for Michael Venechek.
Pardon?
Yes.
It was just to ask whether we can preserve the tree. I'd like you to explain why that is impossible.
You know, I would have to.
Could you on 1.4, could you give us the location of that tree?
Yeah, that I'm not sure.
Put up 1.4.
I could show you. I drew it in. If you want to look at my, my crude drawing.
I like your crude drawing.
Very nice.
Where is it? I didn't see that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, I, I feel like Van Nuys now. That, that's where I placed the tree.
I thought it was further up the slope, but.
Yeah, I think it is a little bit, but it's pretty close.
Well, you could try to work around it. It could die and go from there. I don't know.
As I said, the, the beavers have been very busy with our landscaping.
Including mature trees like that?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I've taken out, I have some pictures of maybe two and a half or three-foot diameter.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, one or two have landed on boats, so.
Yeah, there, there's a tree.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
But like I said, you know, the flip side is we probably planted about 60 trees in the last couple of years.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants?
I, I wonder how many, does the club lease its facilities to outside organizations for events?
So during a normal year, our club is busy with, yes, all sorts, we, not only like private events, but fundraisers, I mean, what's your typical club space would do?
And so I guess my question is, what's the balance between the number of member events versus outside groups? When I asked earlier, you said you have an event for members once a month, plus your midsummer party. That says to me 13 events a year. How, how many events are you leasing the facility to?
So the, here, just to give you a brief history. So the club is a two-story club and the bottom story where these decks are located are the member section. Then the second floor is where the events are held and they're able to separate so that we can have private events and not interfere with our club members. So that's how kind of the format is set up. So we can have, the club is rented, in a normal year, like, obviously last year there was nothing. But in a normal year, it's rented constantly. I mean, it's a beautiful area for weddings and fundraisers, et cetera. So you can function like with, with two separate entities. The restriction we have is that we're not that big physically, so for a sit-down wedding, it's like 120 people, which in this day and age is tiny compared to what, you know, people are looking for.
But those, the, the deck facility will be available to private parties renting?
The downstairs, the proposed deck will not be available to a private club, to private use. That is only on the second floor. They, they do not come down, the, the space that is rented does not include the, the current deck or the proposed deck. That's just for our membership.
So just to be clear, the, the upper level deck is part of that, that rental available area, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? If not, can we have a?
Oh, I'll ask a question. I'm going to ask a question, just because it didn't come up. Let's see, I wrote down that in normal circumstances, the existing deck has room for about 30 tables, but it's about half that during COVID. So how many tables do you expect to be able to fit in this additional deck area? Like in optimal conditions and then COVID conditions?
Yeah, so it'll probably be another 10 to 15, depending on how they're configured, right? You have, you know, six or eight-foot tables, you have small rounds. It really depends on the groups that are, that are using them. And I think that, at least for a while, people are not going to be, at least our members are not going to be happy having tables right next to each other. It seems it's going to be a little while before people are ready to have, you know, said cheek to jowl.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? We can have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion unless somebody else would like to.
I can, I can make it if I can find it.
So I'm taking five.
Thank you. All right, so I will move to recommend granting a request for a one-half-foot combined sideyard setback variation, a 29-foot zero-inch rear yard deck setback variation, a 1,524.04 square foot or 28.5% rear yard structure impervious, pervious surface coverage variation, and a 1,392.87 square foot or 26% rear yard total impervious, pervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a deck on the legal non-conforming structure at 20 Harvard Drive in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second it.
Impervious surface coverage variation, that's going to be my new tongue twister for the kids. So I was out there and I saw Hyde out there and was talking to him about it. And I actually checked to see beavers avoid eating conifers, so that is probably the reason why the evergreen has survived and just about everything else has gone. I did ask him specifically about the trees, because there's another one, which is a memorial tree shrub a little further up the hill and that will not be impacted. And the beaver does quite a job. There are wood chips everywhere from where he was eating the tree, which is further down the slope. It would be nice to, to see the plan for the replacement deck, but I think that their intention is to replace what was there and to match the new deck with the old deck. So I don't think, even though we don't have the plans, that it's going to be tremendously different, if at all different, from the plans that are presented to us. And the park district doesn't have any problems with this. The MWD doesn't have any problems with this. The neighbors don't have any problems with this. The only thing that I can see that I think Maria was drilling down to was what's the impact on the park in terms of the amount of traffic that goes through there and would this increase traffic? And Hyde has, has told us, reassured us that the membership is not going to increase. So this seems on the face of it to just be additional seating area for the existing membership. And if that's the case, I don't see, I can't find any reason not to support it. So I will be supporting it.
Okay, excuse me, this is Bob Sermon. I think, you know, we, we talked for a while about the project that's ongoing right now. And I think we have to remember that that's not part of this request. And we're not, you know, we're not the zoning police, you know, it's up to the village to get the inspectors out there to verify the work that's being done and planned and all of that. So I think that really needs to be taken out of the equation. Besides that, I can support it. You know, the impervious numbers are very huge, but we're talking about a deck that has open joints and it's on a hill going to the lake. You know, the rain is just going to roll right down that, you know, some will be absorbed into the soil, but a majority, if it's a heavy rain, probably will just roll right down the, the hill. So, and I think the setbacks are, are minor. And, you know, I agree with Ryrie that, you know, it's not going to impact anybody nearby visually and all the other organizations that he mentioned, so I can support it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll ask those comments. Littard, I agree with what Bob just said about impervious coverage and the water just flowing under it. The only thing I saw that would be negative about this is if you walk along the existing deck, the walkway there is quite narrow and feels narrow because you're between the water and the wall. And this is going to continue that for the fact that this is really only a member. Turn about it that much, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I support it also. I, I agree that that walk gets kind of narrow, although I don't know how many people really walk down there because you have to go down that hill. But I just want to make it absolutely clear, this is a very unique case, both because of its location and what this building brings to the village of Wilmeth. I've attended any number of events there. I'm not a member, so I've not been able to go, I guess, to the lower level. I didn't realize that. But I must say that it, it's a remarkable place and, and quite honestly, and I've lived in the village a long time, for many years, I kind of thought that it belonged to the village. I didn't fully appreciate that it wasn't something that belonged to the village, but it's always been open. There's always, it seems like, a charity or fundraiser able to use the facility in such a way that it felt like a very welcoming place. So I, I, I think it will add to the attractiveness of that space.
I, I agree with everything that's been said and I would add that it is, the, the club is an asset to the community, the larger Wilmeth community, above and beyond its membership. And I, I think I did come into tonight's meeting leaning against this proposal because of the high percentages in terms of impervious surface and structure, but I, I will be supporting it. I'm persuaded by my fellow members.
Your colleagues, yeah. I, I too can support the project. I, I don't have any further comments.
This reminds me, this is zoned our residential, just like Michigan Shores. And whatever is done here will require every inch addition or change, will require a lot of variations. If you recall, on Michigan Shores, even a small addition or change requires a massive, it looks like a massive variation because most of the building is not in compliance with the R1 zoning. And I think we're dealing with this here the same as well, so I, this is a unique, unique location and I can support it as well. Can we call for a vote?
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glettard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees who will meet on April 27th to consider this case. Thank you all. Good luck. Thank you very much.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2021-C-08.
Second? Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glettard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the next case. Oh, I, I forgot. I always forget this. You have to remind me, Lisa or someone. I assume we have no other comments from anyone out there?
Sorry, yes, there was no one else in the meeting for this case and no, no emails or comments in the chat.
Let's remind me the next time, please.
Great, yes.
As, as Mr. Pelletin did before. Let's call the next case.
Our next case is 2021 Z7, 10 Canterbury Court. This is a request for a 34.83-foot rear yard setback variation and a 16.87-foot rear yard setback variation with the construction of two one-story additions on the legal non-conforming structure. And our applicants are here.
Welcome. Good evening. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Paul Constant of Constant Architecture. I live at 653 Sheridan Road in Winnetka. And Aiman Murphy is with me as well. He will give you the details on the requested variation, but I just wanted to speak briefly about the house and my clients. This is an interesting house. I, I'm not exactly sure how to characterize its architecture other than to say it's, it's eclectic and that, that really is the charm of the house and part of what the Kings, my client, like so much about the house and Canterbury Street. Their goal is to preserve this house and make it their lifelong residence. We went to work on the house, initially pulled a permit to rework the kitchen. And then looking at the problems in the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing and the addition of a, really an adequate elevator, pulled back and decided we really needed to do more to the house than we originally contemplated. So we looked at the, Christie King felt that the kitchen was a bit inadequate. We looked at expanding it within the house and there just really wasn't room to do that, so that really broke the footprint. And then we looked at the garage and the turning radius, the porch was there and maintaining that was important. And so we felt we could take off the existing greenhouse and add to the garage in that direction, which would make the possible to put a larger garage doors in and, and, you know, aid in making that turn. And then the wish list grew a little bit to add more glass and a screen porch to the lakeside, all within the character of the house, so the masonry, the rough shingles, the, all the windows will be replaced, again, matching the existing windows, but, but, so it will be a total house renovation. And I think a really, really nice thing for the Kings to do to the neighborhood and, and add to the community in preserving this house. And I will turn this over to Aiman Murphy, who's the project architect for my office, to explain the request. to explain the request for variation and the zoning restrictions. Aiman?
Hi, this is Aiman Murphy. I'm just going to, if it's all right, share a couple of slides which kind of help to demonstrate the, what do I say, the peculiar zoning situation that we're in. Is this, my screen showing up for everybody?
Not yet.
Lisa, is it possible that you may need to approve for me to be able to share? Or, let me see.
I don't think so. Yeah, there you go.
Is that, that working for everybody now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This is my first time using Microsoft Teams. So this is the existing site plan for the house and the property.
We're not seeing that. We're seeing your menu, but not the actual image.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We see that, well, we see that. We see icons of the plans, but not the, it's not enlarged. They give the, don't click on it, maybe? Open it?
How about now?
Not yet.
You might need to unshare and then reshare your desktop versus if you get a couple choices.
Stop sharing. Open share tray.
Here we go.
There we go.
Is that, everyone can see that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. This is the existing site plan, and you can see the actual property lines are shown in bold. The existing footprints of the house, the detached garage, well, attached garage, and then the existing greenhouse are all kind of shown hatched here. And then what's also indicated is the actual interpretation of the setback lines going around the house, or sorry, going around the property. And you can see, the peculiar thing right now is that the property is being interpreted as a irregular shaped lot, which is leading to sort of the radius front yard setback, but then also actually a 50-foot rear yard setback along the north side of the property. Now, what that does is it leaves us with just about 40 feet of buildable width across the width of the property, which when you translate that into square footage means that about 8,000 square feet of a 26,000 square foot lot is buildable, which is just around 30%. And then to look at this slide, it's the same site plan. What I've just done for reference is highlighted for you the amounts of the existing footprint of the house that is currently considered non-conforming with that interpretation. As you can see, it's actually more than half the footprint of the house. And it means that really any kind of improvement to the house, whether it's an exterior alteration or an expansion, would kind of require us to go through the process of obtaining a variation. What I'm showing now is our proposed site plan, which again shows the footprint of the house, the area which is currently non-conforming. And then it also shows in a slightly deeper red, the additions that we are requesting the variation for. Over on the west side, this is a extension of the existing garage in place of the existing greenhouse. And what we're proposing would be to continue to respect the established side yard setback. But we are showing that we are building into that 50-foot rear yard setback. Now, even though that's the case, we're actually not projecting any further into the side yard setback than the existing garage already does. Additionally, you can see the kitchen addition up here at the north end of the house. And the proposed addition is about three and a half feet, projecting off the existing exterior wall. And what we're showing is we're not proposing to extend any further out than if we were adhering to the same established side yard setback on the north side of the property that we already have on the west side. And as you can see, when you kind of compare that 10.59 side yard setback to where the 50-foot rear yard setback sits, it really starts to look more like a traditional buildable area for a lot this size. And just for reference, this is the proposed north elevation with the garage addition here at the west end of the house. And then just to give you an idea of the scale of the kitchen addition relative to the rest of the existing elevation. Something else to note is that we are proposing to also put windows, new windows, into some of the existing walls on the north side of the house. And as they are existing non-conforming, these windows would, in theory, still require a variation, even if we weren't increasing the footprint of the house at all. Going back to the site, proposed site plan for a second, the other things to point out are we are proposing a conforming, single-story addition to the existing sunroom, and then also a screen porch along the east side of the house, which spans between the zone that's within the accepted buildable area, but then also into that 50-yard setback, 50-foot side yards, rear yard setback. But as you can see, it's also kind of not really even visible from any other properties based upon the existing footprint of the house. And this is the proposed east elevation showing, you know, the additional screen porch and sunroom addition on this side. And you can see over here, this would be the actual addition for the kitchen, just to give you an idea of the scale. We are also proposing to provide a new attic bedroom dormer, which would give us the light ventilation and the egress we would require for the additional living space up at that level. And despite the fact that, again, that's purely on the east side of the house and would never actually be able to be seen from any of the surrounding properties, it still projects into that 50-foot rear yard setback that is kind of causing us quite a few problems here. To wrap it up, essentially what we are dealing with here is a 100-year-old house, which I think you can see that we cited with the intention that the north and the south lotlines would be treated as the side yards and that the main rear yard would be to the back, to the east, facing towards the lake. We are looking to improve the house by providing all-new amenities for the owners, but also by preserving its existing massing and character, which is really unique. And we're really trying to work with the same kind of details and materials that are sensitive to its history and really stay with the character of the house. And we're asking for the village and the zoning board to help us really make this a great lifelong home for our clients. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
This is Ryrie Pelletin. I have a quick one. You showed the elevation of the kitchen. The existing kitchen has a door that leads out and there's a patio. Would you be maintaining the patio, enlarging the patio, or eliminating the patio? Because I did not see a door in the elevation.
There is no door, and we are eliminating the patio.
And the request is for two variant, or variances for two single-story structures? And that because the addition to the sunroom is conforming, does not require variance? The screen porch, it's not clear to me whether that one does or not. It would appear that that one would.
That's, that is actually a question that I had as I was kind of rereading the information. And yes, the screen porch, as we have it currently shown, does project into that 50-foot rear yard setback. So, I mean, I kind of would, would turn that over to Lisa and just ask if we need to, what do I say, if we need to actually break that out as a separate line item.
Probably should have, yeah.
Let me ask this question. I think I'm now beginning to understand what the issue is because I was having trouble just from the materials. It looks like the back, what I would call the rear yard or backyard, that's on the north side of the house?
Yeah.
That's correct. That's the interpretation.
So that normally, if, for example, when you drive up to the house, you would expect that the east side of the house was the backyard. And we're not looking at the east side then. We're only looking at what happens when you start measuring from the north side of the house?
Correct. Our first instinct when we were looking at this was that the rear yard would be on the east side of the house, facing towards the lake. But when we went in for zoning interpretation, the idea was that basically because of the way in which this is positioned at the end of Canterbury, it's considered to be a cul-de-sac lot, which then led to the rear yard being set on the north side of the property, which as you can see, causes a lot of problems in terms of the existing footprint of the historic home.
It certainly does. Okay. Thank you.
Lisa, while we're discussing this, could you think about the language to add, the thing that Mr. Pelletin, the variation that may be needed for the porch?
Sure.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Well, actually, I do have one more question, and that is, looking at the west side of the house, the garage now will be a little bit closer to that house, just to the west. Has anybody, I see people shaking their head, maybe I'm wrong. I thought that.
No, no closer than the existing greenhouse.
No, the difference is, one is a, one is a greenhouse, one is a garage. Has anybody heard from that neighbor?
I happened to, when I visited the house, by the way, to the owner, owner representatives, I did trespass. I opened the gate and illegally walked on the property. But as I was walking out, the neighbor to the west, directly to the west, was landscaping on his site. And he had, he had two concerns, and he walked me over to where the kitchen addition was, was going to be. And he was wondering whether, he was concerned whether it would partially block his view from a window from his house of the lake. And he looked at the plans that I showed him, that it would add three feet to the north, and he seemed to be okay with it. The other concern he had was there's a tree to the east of the greenhouse, a massive tree. I presume that will be retained.
Yeah, I, Aiman, I don't think we were affecting any trees on the property.
I was very concerned about the same thing, Reinhard, and I looked carefully at the plan and the setbacks, and, you know, because of Brad's concern as well. And it looks to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Constant and Mr. Murphy, that the line of the new garage addition on the west side is in line with the current greenhouse.
That's correct.
So that it shouldn't impede, impinge upon the existing tree, which is still a little further west, and I think might even be the neighbor's tree. You know, I had some concerns. I don't know what the footings are like for that greenhouse. They're going to have to do some digging, but I think that the tree will probably survive.
Any other comments or questions?
My comment was, I just would like the board to know that the Kings are very dedicated to making this a lifelong home and are going to be putting in a lot of money to preserve the house.
I presume, Mr. Constant, that you are not tasked with dealing with the, with the edge of the lake and all that situation?
We've been, just gave them the name an engineer to work with, and he is, he is putting in some shoreline protection, or has put in some shoreline protection.
We're not, we're not dealing with that here today. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we're ready to close.
Do I have to check with YouTube?
Good call, Mr. Sermon.
Yes, there's been no emails and no one in the meeting or in the YouTube chat.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon. I think now we can close testimony and ask for a motion.
Unless somebody is excited about it. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend grant a request for a 34.83 rear yard setback variation and a 16.87 rear yard setback variation to permit the construction of two one-story additions on the legal non-conforming structure, 10 Canterbury Court, in accordance with the plans submitted.
And I'll second that.
I have a question for Lisa before we put this to a vote. Should the motion be amended to read three one-story additions?
That seems fair to me, yeah.
Would that cover the, the part of the enclosed porch that is in the 50-foot setback?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So we don't need any other language to accommodate that?
I would just like to double-check also if the dormer needs any specific language, just because I don't want to run into any problems later on if that would not be covered.
I don't know what the setback is to the screen porch or to the dormer. It looks like this, the porch may have maybe a 10-foot setback variation, maybe 40 feet from the lotline. Ditto for the dormer, but the plans are recommended as shown. So I just wanted to say, you know, a rear yard setback for the screen porch and for the dormer, I think we would be covered and we could sharpen that pencil for the village board meeting.
Okay, so what is the motion then? Could you repeat that, Lisa?
Sure. I would suggest a request for a 34.83 foot rear yard setback variation, a 16.87 foot rear yard setback variation, a 10-foot rear yard setback variation, and an eight-foot rear yard setback variation to permit the construction of two one-story additions, a screen porch, and an attic dormer on the legal non-conforming structure.
Mr. Sermon, you made the motion. Shall we amend it accordingly?
So moved, can I say that?
I think that's very wise.
So seconded.
Okay.
I've known about this house for years. I actually kind of indirectly knew the person that owned it previously. I'd met him a couple of times, the Cox family. And it's a beautiful home, and, you know, it's over 100 years old, from my understanding, and it needs to be updated to reflect the current needs. And I think the, Paul has done a great job and his team. I think it's, the additions are consistent with the design of the structure and will fit in very well. I think the difficulty is the sighting of the property and the consideration of the side yard versus what we feel is really the rear yard. So I think those are things that this project got caught up in. And I think that's, that's a hardship, and I can see that what was designed works well. It's not going to impact the neighbors, and I can support it.
And I would agree with what Mr. Sermon said. I think that the hardship is the setbacks and the way that those are laid out by the village. Having the rear yard setback go straight through the Having the rear yard setback go straight through the length of the property does, as Mr. Murphy had pointed out, really reduce the usable amount of space there. I think that the additions are fairly minimal. And I think it's a wonderful house, and the fenestration, the changes to the fenestration will make it infinitely better. It will open it up to the lake, open it up to light. It'll make it feel much more modern and give some additional living space that faces the lake. And so I think this will be a tremendous benefit to the community and to the village. And, you know, if the neighbors are satisfied about the garage and the kitchen, I don't think that we, I can't find any reason, like an earlier case, to object to this. So I'll be supporting it.
I agree with everything that was just said. And the fact that it's considered a cul-de-sac property and its front yard is calculated on a skew off the corner really differentiates this property from other lakefront properties in the village. If you were to drive up and down Michigan Avenue, anywhere else in the village, what is the east side of the property? Is the backyard in all of those instances? And I don't think that the quirk of a cul-de-sac entry to this property should penalize it from making full use of its shoreline views and citing a house that can be functional, I guess. I'll be supporting it.
I also support for all the reasons that have just been made, I mentioned.
I agree. This is for all the reasons that have been made and feel happy that someone is restoring this beautiful stuff.
Sure. Ditto. I started saying I agree. I too can support it.
I have a question for Lisa. I saw in the window a grading permit and a construction permit. Are those issued for these kinds of things I consider that we're talking about today?
Well, as Mr. Constant said, a remodel permit has been issued. So that was issued back in December.
And that can be issued absent any, for any variations, is that correct?
That project did not need any relief, yes.
That was, that was separate. That was the first iteration, if I understand Mr. Constant correctly.
Okay, I can also, I won't repeat everything. I think you've all said it. And I think this is a good solution and it will be a great asset to the village when it is all done. I would urge Mr. Constant, the owner, should do everything possible to save that matured, what looks like a large mature tree. I know the neighbor to the west is concerned about it. So if that can be paid attention to, that would be great.
We can have, perhaps look at it, make recommendations, and we definitely want to preserve it.
Thank you.
They're conservative people.
If there are no other comments, I think we can go to a vote, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees. We will meet on April 27th to consider this. And good luck and hope everything goes well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2021-Z07.
Second.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. And to our next case, Ms. Roberts.
Oh, did you, Reinhard, did you want to mention when the meeting is they should attend?
I did. I thought I did. It's April 27th.
Our next case is 2010-Z10, 100 Garrison Avenue. This is a request for a 9.58-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation. Permit the retention of an air conditioner condenser, and our applicants are here.
Welcome and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Chevroot, and this is my wife, Elizabeth Chevroot. We are both the owners and residents of 100 Garrison. We are, we moved into Wilmatt July of last year and quickly realized that our AC unit was not cooling our second floor. So we called, apped up, relied on them to make sure everything was done properly. And they replaced our air conditioner unit in the exact place it's been for the past 20-plus years. And we got a notice, we realized that this was not a conforming location a few months later when we got a notice from the village. And so now we're working to obviously make things right here. And so the reason why we are, we believe that this is a reasonable exception is, is one, all of you have come to our neighborhood. It's a very tight neighborhood here. We all have relatively small lots in this, in Wilmatt, where our properties are usually around 10 feet between each house. So usually five feet or less in between each house. And our, and in addition to that, our current unit is, it will not impact our neighbors' sightlines or increase any, or provide any danger or cause any lighting issues for their house. It's in between our two houses, does not block the only windows they have on that side of the house. And in talking to both our neighbors in the neighborhood and the fact that the unit has been there for the last 20-plus years, we do not believe that it will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And the landscaping that we plan to do to help block the unit from view from the street will in fact enhance the neighborhood's block. So in that, we've talked to several neighbors in our neighborhood about the look of the unit in front. No one has come to us with any concerns. Our neighbors to the south, Joel and Margaret Lippman, who are the neighbors directly next to the unit, we've talked to them and they are comfortable with the unit in the current position, given the landscaping that we are planning to do. In addition to that, we have since had apped, come back out and look for other conforming locations. They looked at two different locations. One would be on the roof of our extension. They did not recommend that as a location, but it would be more than 10 feet away from the property border. They did not recommend it for a couple of reasons. One, it would be right outside of our bedroom window. And two, it would create, we would have to have our coil extended from that point to the opposite side of the house. And the length of the coil would be exposed to the elements and also would cause the unit to be run, to run less efficient. The other place that we had him look was still a non-conforming location that would require the same setback requirements, but just further back on that same side of the house. And in talking to our neighbors, they actually would prefer it to be where it is today versus further back in the house along the fence line because that would interfere with their backyard, their backyard noise. With that, just like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicants?
Was any consideration given to placing the unit in your backyard? And I realize that creates noise for you, but...
So again, our backyard in a conforming location, if we put the unit 10 feet away, it would be blocking either our door or our sidewalk. And on one side of the house, it would, you'd still have that same issue with the length of the cable line.
Thank you.
Did you increase or change the size of this unit at all?
It's, the size of the unit is about six inches taller than the old unit, but it is approximately... Yeah, it's like six or seven. It's about six inches less wide. So it basically, it's the same size, but it's higher and not as long.
I imagine it being a newer unit, one thing, it's more energy efficient. But at the same time, the newer ones are much quieter. So I see that as an improvement compared to the existing unit that you had.
Yes, the current unit, 70 decibels compared to the old unit would have been, our AC guy said 80 to 85 decibels when it was new. So a significant improvement on the noise as well.
Okay, no other comments? We can close testimony. Is there anyone else, Lisa, that would like to comment on this case out there?
I don't see anybody else in the meeting and no emails or chat.
Thank you. We can now close testimony and have a motion, please.
I'll do the motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a 9.58-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation to permit the retention of an air conditioner condenser at 100 Garrison Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
I'll second it.
I think this is one of our easier decisions. This is a very small lot, and locating a condenser in a conforming location is difficult. And the explanation about the coil extended and being exposed to the elements, I think probably diminishes the efficiency of any condenser that would be located on the property. Given that the neighbors have no concerns about its present location, I'll be supporting this.
I support it also for the reasons that Maria mentioned. I'm hoping that you will actually plant some landscaping around it to block the view from the street. But one thing I've learned in my short tenure on the zoning board is that when it comes to these air conditioners, the real question is the noise level. And to move it anywhere further back towards the backyard, it really does make it worse because that's where people are spending their summers out there in their backyards or their back decks, and so they're going to hear it. So even though it's a little bit of an odd location so far front, it's, in a sense, as long as there's landscaping there, it's maybe the best place for the air conditioning unit. So I support it.
Hi, this is Bob. I concur with my colleagues. And the only thing to add to Brad's comment is, if you ended up putting it into the backyard, oftentimes it'll affect your neighbor much more, too. And that'll be much more of an issue. So I think the sighting works in this situation, given the small property.
Okay. I, Mr. Chevroot was kind enough to show me the backyard when I visited the property. And it is a very tiny backyard. And between the doors and windows, facing the small backyard, you know, I tried to see whether there was any other option and I just couldn't, couldn't think, couldn't see any other option than where they have now located it. So I can also support it. No other comments? We can go to a vote, Ms. Roberts.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this will go with a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees, who will meet on April 27th to consider this case.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2021-Z10.
I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you.
Lisa, I have a question for you. I just noticed a typo on the description of the property for this case. The first sentence says that it's located on the east side of Greenleaf instead of Garrison.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, I move to recommend approval of the minutes for Wednesday, March 17th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Ms. Roberts, are there any comments out there about anything?
I see no guests in the meeting and no new emails.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I had one question for you, Lisa. When is our next meeting? Is it two weeks?
Yes, two weeks, April 21st.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned. Enjoy the wonderful weather, as long as it lasts.
Yes. Thank you.